In the blessed day of the Lord, we will pray to you all in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Let's turn our attention to Luke 13:4-5. Are those eighteen upon whom the tower in Siloam fell and slew them, thinking that they were sinners above all men that dwelt in Jerusalem? I tell you, nay, but except he repent, he shall all likewise perish.
The Lord has made a decision for this. When Jesus Christ was on this earth, the incident which took place on the time, he pointed out this. A tower fell down. That tower wasn't Siloam. When it fell down, all those who were standing nearby, the dwellers of Jerusalem, those who believed the tower, and those who were staying downwards, they all died. He raised up a question, those who were in this Jerusalem, they all died, are they sinners or they accusers?
Do you think that they are sinners? Are you think that they are the accusers? I tell you, nay. They are not accusers, they are not sinners. Except he repent, he shall all likewise perish or you will be corrupted. That people were not sinners, they were not accusers, but Jesus points out that they are the people, those who don't repent. When we say a spiritual life begins in a person, the beginning step is this repentance. If a man or a woman says that I have repented, unless they saw the cross, it cannot be accepted. It cannot be accepted, those who have been seen the cross, they are not repented. Reason is repentance begins from the cross. The steps of the salvation started only on the cross. He did miracles. He had done wonders. He raised up all the dead ones. The scripture says that we cannot write all the miracles which he did. Through all these miracles, person cannot be redeemed. After that, Jesus hands up to the cross. His propheciation became powerful that it may redeem all the person. The scripture says he tasted death for every man. Many sacrifices are offered on this earth, but it cannot be redeemed. Blameless sacrifice of Jesus alone can deliver a man, it can lead man to perfection. Here, Jesus stresses the importance of repentance, unless you repent, you shall also be perished. I told you last night, repentance is an experience which we get looking at the cross. If a man is changed into a Christian, if he is not, he is lying, if he is not, he is lying, if he is in a church, he became a Christian, that explanation is not right. First thing is here repentance must take place in his life. Beginning of repentance begins at the cross. If you want to repent, you must do this, 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 you must do this. When we say repentance, it is not a beginning step which takes place in the life of a man, but it has to be practiced till the end. Have you saved? I have saved during the period of this brother. Have you taken water baptism? I have taken baptism at Pastor Paul. When they prayed in that place, I received it. We are speaking about an incident and a place for everything. But this repentance is not taken place at one incident. When a person repented till his death or till he meets Jesus Christ, it is the experience which has to take place in his daily life. For all the failures in his life, he has to take a sanctification, he has to take a holiness in his life for every repenting things. He has to receive it till the end. This is the truth when we see the spirit of God writes to Revelation 2:1-3. They have received different spiritual experiences. But they are saying to six churches that you have to repent. They had very good spiritual experiences. They had good ministries. Though they have little strength, they didn't deny it. Even though there are many sins, some of them, they must repent, they are saying. Though they had all these experiences, the spirit of God stresses saying that they have to repent. When a man borns on this earth. Till his grace finishes, a purification of blood has taken place in his lives. He is eating, sleeping, traveling. He is crossing many paths in his lives. Today we all are sitting alive here. Without your knowledge, purification of blood is taking place in your lives. When it stops, he became sick. When it becomes more, he will face death. Like what? Saying that I have received repentance once, if he didn't repent in his life, there is no person rich or miserable like him. The word of God stresses saying repentance is born again. When we see John 3:3. Unless a man born again, he cannot see the kingdom of God. It is the next birth which a man takes place on this earth. We have taken a birth that we may live on this earth. If we want to enter into the kingdom of God, we have to take another birth for it. There are seven steps or seven aspects for this repentance. You would have saved for so many years before. You may have different experiences in your spiritual life. You may have deeper knowledge or different experiences about the scripture. Or you may stay fast in this religion for so many years. Whatever may be, you stand there. In whichever fellowship you may be in. The seven steps of repentance or conversion must take place in your lives. Do you have that now? Are you practicing it in your lives? If you didn't practice in your lives. 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 If you didn't practice in your lives.[663.08][663.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[663.16][663.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[663.24][663.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[663.32][663.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[663.40][663.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[663.48][663.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[663.56][663.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[663.64][663.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[663.72][663.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[663.80][663.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[663.88][663.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[663.96][664.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[664.04][664.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[664.12][664.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[664.20][664.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[664.28][664.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[664.36][664.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[664.44][664.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[664.52][664.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[664.60][664.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[664.68][664.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[664.76][664.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[664.84][664.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[664.92][664.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[665.00][665.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[665.08][665.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[665.16][665.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[665.24][665.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[665.32][665.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[665.40][665.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[665.48][665.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[665.56][665.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[665.64][665.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[665.72][665.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[665.80][665.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[665.88][665.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[665.96][666.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[666.04][666.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[666.12][666.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[666.20][666.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[666.28][666.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[666.36][666.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[666.44][666.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[666.52][666.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[666.60][666.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[666.68][666.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[666.76][666.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[666.84][666.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[666.92][666.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[667.00][667.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[667.08][667.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[667.16][667.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[667.24][667.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[667.32][667.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[667.40][667.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[667.48][667.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[667.56][667.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[667.64][667.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[667.72][667.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[667.80][667.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[667.88][667.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[667.96][668.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[668.04][668.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[668.12][668.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[668.20][668.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[668.28][668.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[668.36][668.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[668.44][668.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[668.52][668.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[668.60][668.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[668.68][668.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[668.76][668.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[668.84][668.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[668.92][668.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[669.00][669.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[669.08][669.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[669.16][669.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[669.24][669.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[669.32][669.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[669.40][669.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[669.48][669.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[669.56][669.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[669.64][669.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[669.72][669.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[669.80][669.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[669.88][669.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[670.00][670.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[670.08][670.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[670.16][670.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[670.24][670.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[670.32][670.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[670.40][670.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[670.48][670.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[670.56][670.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[670.64][670.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[670.72][670.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[670.80][670.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[670.88][670.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[670.96][671.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[671.04][671.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[671.12][671.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[671.20][671.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[671.28][671.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[671.36][671.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[671.44][671.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[671.52][671.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[671.60][671.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[671.68][671.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[671.76][671.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[671.84][671.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[671.92][671.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[672.00][672.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[672.08][672.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[672.16][672.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[672.24][672.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[672.32][672.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[672.40][672.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[672.48][672.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[672.56][672.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[672.64][672.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[672.72][672.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[672.80][672.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[672.88][672.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[672.96][673.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[673.04][673.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[673.12][673.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[673.20][673.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[673.28][673.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[673.36][673.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[673.44][673.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[673.52][673.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[673.60][673.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[673.68][673.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[673.76][673.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[673.84][673.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[673.92][673.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[674.00][674.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[674.08][674.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[674.16][674.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[674.24][674.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[674.32][674.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[674.40][674.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[674.48][674.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[674.56][674.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[674.64][674.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[674.72][674.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[674.80][674.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[674.88][674.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[674.96][675.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[675.04][675.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[675.12][675.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[675.20][675.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[675.28][675.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[675.36][675.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[675.44][675.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[675.52][675.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[675.60][675.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[675.68][675.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[675.76][675.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[675.84][675.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[675.92][675.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[676.00][676.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[676.08][676.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[676.16][676.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[676.24][676.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[676.32][676.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[676.40][676.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[676.48][676.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[676.56][676.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[676.64][676.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[676.72][676.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[676.80][676.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[676.88][676.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[676.96][677.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[677.04][677.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[677.12][677.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[677.20][677.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[677.28][677.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[677.36][677.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[677.44][677.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[677.52][677.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[677.60][677.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[677.68][677.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[677.76][677.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[677.84][677.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[677.92][677.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[678.00][678.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[678.08][678.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[678.16][678.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[678.24][678.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[678.32][678.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[678.40][678.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[678.48][678.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[678.56][678.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[678.64][678.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[678.72][678.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[678.80][678.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[678.88][678.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[678.96][679.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[679.04][679.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[679.12][679.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[679.20][679.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[679.28][679.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[679.36][679.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[679.44][679.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[679.52][679.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[679.60][679.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[679.68][679.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[679.76][679.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[679.84][679.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[679.92][679.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[680.00][680.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[680.08][680.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[680.16][680.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[680.24][680.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[680.32][680.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[680.40][680.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[680.48][680.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[680.56][680.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[680.64][680.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[680.72][680.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[680.80][680.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[680.88][680.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[680.96][681.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[681.04][681.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[681.12][681.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[681.20][681.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[681.28][681.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[681.36][681.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[681.44][681.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[681.52][681.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[681.60][681.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[681.68][681.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[681.76][681.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[681.84][681.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[681.92][681.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[682.00][682.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[682.08][682.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[682.16][682.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[682.24][682.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[682.32][682.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[682.40][682.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[682.48][682.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[682.56][682.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[682.64][682.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[682.72][682.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[682.80][682.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[682.88][682.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[682.96][683.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[683.04][683.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[683.12][683.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[683.20][683.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[683.28][683.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[683.36][683.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[683.44][683.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[683.52][683.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[683.60][683.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[683.68][683.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[683.76][683.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[683.84][683.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[683.92][683.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[684.00][684.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[684.08][684.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[684.16][684.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[684.24][684.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[684.32][684.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[684.40][684.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[684.48][684.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[684.56][684.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[684.64][684.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[684.72][684.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[684.80][684.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[684.88][684.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[684.96][685.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[685.04][685.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[685.12][685.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[685.20][685.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[685.28][685.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[685.36][685.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[685.44][685.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[685.52][685.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[685.60][685.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[685.68][685.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[685.76][685.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[685.84][685.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[685.92][685.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[686.00][686.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[686.08][686.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[686.16][686.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[686.24][686.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[686.32][686.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[686.40][686.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[686.48][686.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[686.56][686.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[686.64][686.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[686.72][686.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[686.80][686.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[686.88][686.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[686.96][687.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[687.04][687.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[687.12][687.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[687.20][687.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[687.28][687.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[687.36][687.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[687.44][687.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[687.52][687.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[687.60][687.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[687.68][687.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[687.76][687.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[687.84][687.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[687.92][687.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[688.00][688.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[688.08][688.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[688.16][688.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[688.24][688.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[688.32][688.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[688.40][688.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[688.48][688.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[688.56][688.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[688.64][688.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[688.72][688.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[688.80][688.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[688.88][688.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[688.96][689.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[689.04][689.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[689.12][689.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[689.20][689.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[689.28][689.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[689.36][689.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[689.44][689.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[689.52][689.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[689.60][689.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[689.68][689.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[689.76][689.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[689.84][689.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[689.92][689.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[690.00][690.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[690.08][690.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[690.16][690.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[690.24][690.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[690.32][690.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[690.40][690.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[690.48][690.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[690.56][690.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[690.64][690.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[690.72][690.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[690.80][690.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[690.88][690.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[690.96][691.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[691.04][691.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[691.12][691.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[691.20][691.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[691.28][691.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[691.36][691.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[691.44][691.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[691.52][691.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[691.60][691.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[691.68][691.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[691.76][691.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[691.84][691.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[691.92][691.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[692.00][692.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[692.08][692.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[692.16][692.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[692.24][692.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[692.32][692.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[692.40][692.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[692.48][692.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[692.56][692.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[692.64][692.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[692.72][692.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[692.80][692.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[692.88][692.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[692.96][693.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[693.04][693.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[693.12][693.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[693.20][693.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[693.28][693.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[693.36][693.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[693.44][693.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[693.52][693.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[693.60][693.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[693.68][693.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[693.76][693.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[693.84][693.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[693.92][693.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[694.00][694.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[694.08][694.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[694.16][694.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[694.24][694.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[694.32][694.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[694.40][694.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[694.48][694.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[694.56][694.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[694.64][694.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[694.72][694.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[694.80][694.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[694.88][694.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[694.96][695.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[695.04][695.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[695.12][695.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[695.20][695.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[695.28][695.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[695.36][695.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[695.44][695.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[695.52][695.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[695.60][695.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[695.68][695.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[695.76][695.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[695.84][695.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[695.92][695.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[696.00][696.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[696.08][696.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[696.16][696.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[696.24][696.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[696.32][696.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[696.40][696.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[696.48][696.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[696.56][696.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[696.64][696.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[696.72][696.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[696.80][696.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[696.88][696.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[696.96][697.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[697.04][697.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[697.12][697.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[697.20][697.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[697.28][697.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[697.36][697.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[697.44][697.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[697.52][697.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[697.60][697.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[697.68][697.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[697.76][697.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[697.84][697.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[697.92][697.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[698.00][698.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[698.08][698.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[698.16][698.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[698.24][698.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[698.32][698.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[698.40][698.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[698.48][698.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[698.56][698.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[698.64][698.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[698.72][698.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[698.80][698.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[698.88][698.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[698.96][699.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[699.04][699.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[699.12][699.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[699.20][699.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[699.28][699.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[699.36][699.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[699.44][699.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[699.52][699.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[699.60][699.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[699.68][699.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[699.76][699.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[699.84][699.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[699.92][699.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[699.99][700.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[700.08][700.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[700.16][700.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[700.24][700.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[700.32][700.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[700.40][700.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[700.48][700.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[700.56][700.60][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[700.64][700.68][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[700.72][700.76][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[700.80][700.84][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[700.88][700.92][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[700.96][701.00][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[701.04][701.08][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[701.12][701.16][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[701.20][701.24][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[701.28][701.32][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[701.36][701.40][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[701.44][701.48][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[701.52][701.56][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[701.60][701.64][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[701.68][701.72][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[701.76][701.80][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[701.84][701.88][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[701.92][701.96][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[702.00][702.04][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[702.08][702.12][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[702.16][702.20][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[702.24][702.28][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[702.32][702.36][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[702.40][702.44][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.[702.48][702.52][S02. If you didn't practice in your lives.
அடுத்ததாக பக்தி வைராக்கியத்தை உண்டாக்கிறதாக ஆராவுது காரியம் சொல்லுகிறார்.
The sixth thing is the desire brings zeal in his lives.
எவ்வளவு ஆவல் இருக்கு? உங்கள் கத்தருக்காக நிற்க வேண்டும்னு என்கிறேன். எத்தனை வேறுக்கு ஆவல் இருக்குறது?
How many of you have the zeal?
உங்களுக்குள்ள இந்த ஆவல் இல்லைனா, ஒரு interest தான் இந்த christian life இல்லைனாலே, நீங்க கிருஷ்ணியில் இருந்து நீங்க ஡ைவெட் ஐட்டிங்கனா இருக்காமல்.
If you don't have the zeal, if you are not interested in the christian life, then it means that you are diverted from your christian life.
கிருஷ்ணவுக்கு ஒரு interest ஆன ஒரு game மறை.
Christian life is like an interesting game.
ஒரு அருமையான ஒரு time கிடக்காலா, உடனே அவன் ஆண்டவருக்காக நிற்பா.
If time gets, he will immediately stand for the Lord.
ஒரு சொல்லல் நீங்க எப்படி இருக்கீங்க? அப்படி தான் இருக்கேன். அவன் முன்னிஜ்ஜு போன கேசது.
If we ask how are you, they say I am staying in the same.
கிருஷ்ணவுக்கு விரக்தியின் வாழ்க்கை அல்ல.
Christian life is not a life of hatred.
அது ஒரு பாவ, ஆண்டவருக்காக வாழும்படியான ஒரு நாட்டமுள்ள ஒரு வாழ்க்கை.
It's a life which has a great desire and zeal that they have to live for the Lord.
10 நிமிஷங்கள் கிடைச்சா அது use பண்ணுவா.
If they get ten minutes, they will use it.
ஆரம்பின நேரம் கிடைச்சா அது use பண்ணுவா.
If they get half an hour, they'll use it.
ஒரு 2 நிமிஷம் தான் கிடைக்குன்னா, உடன் அங்கேயும் கண்ணுமடிச்சோவிபா.
Even if they get only two minutes, they close their eyes and pray.
கத்தருக்காக நிற்க கொடிய ஒரு ஆவல், அது அவனுக்குள்ள பக்தி வைராக்கியத்தை உண்டு பண்ணிச்சென்ற.
The desire which they have to stand for the Lord, it brings zeal in his lives.
எத்தனை வேறுக்கு ஒரு பக்தி வைராக்கிய இருக்கே?
How many of you have this godly zeal?
ஆண்டவருக்காக நிற்க வேண்டும்னு என்கிறேன். ஒரு சிந்த எத்தனை வேறுகிறது?
How many of you have the mind that we have to stand for the Lord?
இது ஒரு பாவ உலகம்.
This is a sin, a world of sin.
இது ஒரு கொடுரமான உலகம்.
This is a terrible world.
ஆண்டவருக்காக நிற்க கொடிய சந்தங்களுக்கு வாழ முடியாத ஒரு உலகம்.
It is a world which cannot live, people those who cannot live for God.
இது ஒரு பாபிலோன்.
This is a Babylon.
இது ஒரு நோவா மின் காலம்போல உள்ள உலகம்.
This is a world which is like the period of Noah.
இது லோத்தின் காலத்திலுள்ள உலகம்போல இருக்கிற ஒரு சூலலை.
This is the circumstances which is seen as a period of Noah, Lord.
இதில் ஒரு சாதாரண மனிதன், சாதாரண மகக்கிருஷ்ணவுக்காக நிற்க இயலாது.
Ordinary people ordinarily cannot stand for Christ.
அவன் ஆண்டவருக்காக நிற்க வேண்டுமானால், அவனுக்குள்ள ஒரு பக்தி வைராக்கியம் தேவை.
If he has to stand for the Lord, then he needs godly zeal.
அபிஷேகத்தை பெற்றுக்கொண்டு எகு பொறப்பட்டு வரும்படுது, அவன் சொல்லக்கொடிய வார்த்தை, எனக்கு, தேவனுக்கு நிமித்தம் இருக்கிற, பக்தி வைராக்கித்தை என்னோடு கூட வந்து நிண்டிருந்தீபா?
Receiving the anointing of Holy Ghost, when he stood, he said, "Come and see the godly zeal which I have."
உன்னுடைய வேலைசலத்தில் பக்தி வைராக்கியமா நிற்க முடிகிறதா?
Are you able to stand godly zeal in your work?
உன்னுடைய தொழிலிலே நீ பக்தி வைராக்கியமா செயல்பட முடிகிறதா?
Are you able to work godly zeal in your business?
உன்னுடைய பிரதேசிலே உன்னால் பக்தி வைராக்கியமா நிற்க முடிகிறதா?
Are you able to stand godly zeal in your consecration?
உனக்குள்ள இருக்கிற ஒரு பரிசுத்தத்தின் அந்த தன்மையிலே உன்னால் நிற்க முடிகிறதா?
Are you able to stand in the aspect of your holiness?
விஸ்வாச வாழ்க்கையிலே பரிசுத்த பக்தி வைராக்கியமா நிற்க முடிகிறதா?
Are you able to live with godly zeal in the life of faith?
மனந்திரும்பினேன் என்று சொன்னால், உனக்குள்ள ஆராவுத அனுபவம் சாகுவரை, நீ ஒரு பக்தி வைராக்கியம் உள்ளவனாயின் நிற்பா.
If you say that you are repented, then till your death, you will stand in the sixth experience which is godly zeal.
மனந்திரும்புடைய ஏழாவுத அனுபவம் எவ்வளவு கண்டிப்பை?
The seventh thing is you will have much zeal.
கடைசியான அனுபவம் எவ்வளவு கண்டிப்பையும் அது உனக்குண்டாய்டு.
The last thing is a great, great revenge.
ஒரு தேவனுடைய புள்ளை, மிகுந்த கண்டிப்புள்ளவனாயின் மாறிவிடுவா.
He will have much revenge.
மனந்திரும்புதலை குறித்து.
About this repentance?
யோவான் சானகன் பேச ஆரம்பித்தா.
John the Baptist started speaking.
அந்த மனந்திரும்புதலை பஸ்ட் அவன்தான் introduce பண்றா.
He is the one who introduces repentance.
மனந்திரும்பு என்கிற வார்த்தையை அவன்தான் அதிகமாக உபயோகிக்கிற.
He is the only one who uses the word repentance.
பலையர்ப்பட்டிலே திரும்பு, திரும்பு என்ற வார்த்தையை நாம் அதிகமாக பார்க்க முடிய.
In the Old Testament, we can see turn, turn.
ஆயிரத்தி நானுத்தி ஐந்து மூன்று முறை, பலையர்ப்பட்டிலே திரும்பு என்று கத்தர் பேசுகிறார்.
Thousand four hundred and fifty-three times Lord speaks saying that turn.
வேதம் சொல்லுகிறது, கல்லத்தனமாய் மனந்திரும்பினார்களே அன்றி, அவர்கள் உண்மையாக மனந்திரும்புவதுலே என்றும் சுட்டிக்காட்டுகிறார்.
The word of God stresses that they have turned, they have repented in a robbery manner.
இங்கே சொல்லியிருக்கிறது எவ்வளவு கண்டிப்பை உண்டாக்கிச்சு.
How much revenge it has given?
ஒரு மனிதன் சரியா மனந்திருமிட்டானா, அவனுக்குள்ள ஒரு கண்டிப்பு இருக்கும். ஏனந்தால் யோவான் சானகன் மனந்திரும்புதலை பத்தி பேசுனா, மிகுந்த கண்டிப்புள்ள மனிதன்.
If a man, if a man is repented, then he will have a great revenge.
தவற்றா தவற்றுன்னு சொல்லுவா.
He said, "If there is a mistake, it is wrong."
எது தவற்றானாலும் தவற்றுன்னு சொல்லுவா.
Whatever may be wrong, he'll say it is wrong.
அந்திரக் காட்சிலிருந்த ஒரு மனிதன் தன்னுடைய தம்பி மனிதியை வைத்திருந்தான்.
People, those who are in that politics, he had his brother's wife.
உடனே அதை கண்டித்தான்.
Immediately he rebuked it.
"நீ செய்தது தவறு."
Whatever you have done is wrong.
அவனைப் பிரிச்சி செரச்சாலிலே போட்டான்.
He put him into the prison.
அங்கே அவனுக்கு செரச்சாதம் பண்ணப்பட்டான்.
His head was beheaded.
ஆனாலும் அவன் தன்னுடைய வாழ்க்கையில் கண்டிப்பு பிடல.
But he didn't leave this revenge in his life.
மனந்திரும்பினதை, மனந்திரும்புதலை பேசினான், மனந்திரும்புதலை பைர்ச்சிவித்தான்.
He has spoken about this repentance and he practices it in his life.
அருமையான சகோதர்னே சகோதரியே.
Dear brother and sister.
உன்னுடைய வாள்விலே இந்த மனந்திரும்புதல் சரியாய் நடந்திருக்கிறதா?
Has this repentance taken place in your life clearly?
நம்மில் அனேகர் தடுமாறுத்துக்கு காரணம் இந்த ஏழுல எதோ ஒன்று தோல்பியகு இருக்கிறது.
Many of us are suffering because we have something left behind.
எதோ ஒரு வரத்திலே ரசிக்கப்பட்டிருந்து சொல்லுகிறீர்களே?
You are saying that I have repented some way.
உங்களுடைய வாழ்க்கையில் இந்த மனந்திரும்புதலை ஏழு அனுபவங்கள் இருக்கிறதா?
Do you have the seven experiences in your lives?
மனந்திரும்பின பர்கள் எல்லாம், இந்த ஏழு அனுபவங்கள் இந்திருக்கிற இருக்கிறதுன்னு சொன்னா கை வைத்துக்காகலா.
All those who are repented, all those who can say, "I have all these seven experiences," just lift up your hands.
இப்ப நெட் ரிசில்ட் நீங்க பாத்துக்கலா, நீங்களே பாகலா.
You can see the net research by yourselves.
இதான் நெலவரா.
This is your state.
இது நல்லா தான் கிருஷ்ணவன் தோற்றுபோறது பாத்து மத்தவம் பரியாசம் பண்றா.
Because of this others' mock or failures.
உன்னை குற்றஞாட்டுறதுக்கு காரணம் என்ன?
What is the reason that others are accusing you?
உண்மையான மனந்திரும்பின வாழ்க்கை ஒருவனுக்கு இருந்தா, உன்னை நீக்கு, உன்னை பாத்து ஒருத்தன் கை நெட்ட முடியாது.
If a person has true repentance, no one can point at you.
கை நெட்டுதலும், நிபச்சொல்லும் உன்மேல் இராது என்று வேதம் சொல்லுகிறது.
The word of God says, "The reproaches will not be upon you."
இது தான் ஆன்மீகத்துடைய அஸ்திபாரம்.
This is the foundation of the spiritual life.
இது இல்லாம நீ மாலிகமை கட்டினி, சியோனோ, இருசிலேமோ போய்ச் சேரவே முடியாது.
Without this, you cannot go and reach Zion or Jerusalem.
இப்படையிரா ராமதிகாரம் முதலாம் அவசனம் இரண்டாவசனத்திலே பார்க்கும்படுது.
When we read in Hebrews chapter six verse one.
மனந்திரும்புதல் என்பது கிருஷ்ணவுக்கு வாள்வினுடைய அஸ்திபாரம்.
Repentance is the foundation of a christian life.
இதுக்கு ஒரு கனி இருக்கிறது. மனந்திரும்பினா, உன்ன லைப்ல ஒரு changing நடந்திருக்கும். அதுலா இந்த ஏழு காரியத்தை நாங்களுக்குச் சொன்னேன்.
It has a fruit. If you are repented, there will be a change in your life. That's what I told you about the seven experiences.
மத்தையும் மூன்று ஏற்றிலே பார்க்கும்படுது.
When we see in Matthew three eight.
ஒரு பெரிய திரல்கொட்டம் சந்தங்கள், ஆயிரக்கணக்கான சந்தங்கள், அவனுடத்திலே யோவான் சானத்திலே யானசானம் பெற வந்துவிட்டார்கள்.
Thousands of people came together to take water baptism from John the Baptist.
அவர்களுக்கு தான் பாவ அறிக்கை, அவர்களுக்கு முக்கியமாய் தெரியவில்லை.
Confession was not seen to be important to them.
அவருச்சுலாக பாவ அறிக்கை செதுங்க யானசானம் பிட்டார்கள்.
Some took, some have confessed and they took water baptism.
அவன் அவர்லை பார்த்துச் சொன்னா.
Looking at them, he said.
மனந்திரும்புதலுக்கு ஏற்ற கனிகளைக் கொடுத்துவிட்டு, நீங்க யானசானத்துக்கு வாங்க.
Bring forth repentance, fruits meet for repentance, then you can come for water baptism.
யானசானம் முதல் அல்ல, மனந்திரும்புதலே முதல் அனுபவ.
Water baptism is not first thing, repentance is the first thing.
கத்தொடிய பரிசுத்த நாமத்துக்கு மகிமை உண்டாவதா?
Which is the holy name of God.
அதுக்காக தேவன் செல்லருக்கு டைம் கொடுக்கிறார்.
So the Lord gives some time, time.
வேதத்தில் நீங்கள் வெளிப்பட்டுலே பார்க்கும்படுது.
When you read in Revelation.
இருவத்தி, இரண்டாம் அதிகாரம் இருவத்தி ஓராவசனத்திலே.
Twenty-two chapter and verse twenty-one.
இரண்டாம் அதிகாரம் இருவத்தி ஓராவசனத்திலே.
Two and verse twenty-one.
வேதம் என்ன சொல்லுகிறது?
What the word of God says?
"நான் மனந்திரும்பு முடியாக அவளுக்கு தவனை கொடுத்தேன்."
I gave a space to repent.
அருமையான சகோதர்னே சகோதரியே, நீ மனந்திரும்பு வேண்டுமென்பதற்கு, கத்தர் எத்தனையோ தவனைகளை உனக்கு கொடுத்திருக்கிறான்.
Dear brother and sister, the Lord has given many chances that you may repent.
ஆனால் உனக்கோ மனந்திரும்பு விருப்பம் இல்லை.
But you don't have the desire to repent.
இன்றக்கு மறுபடியும் உனக்கு ஒரு தவனை, ஒரு வாய்ப்பு, ஒரு ஆலைப்பு உனக்கு கொடுக்கப்படுகிறது.
Today, a calling, a chance has been given to you.
அருமையான சகோதர்னே சகோதரியே.
Dear brother and sister.
வேதம் என்ன சொல்லுகிறது?
What the word of God says?
"உனக்கு கிடைத்த இந்த நாளிலாகிலும், இந்த தெங்காசி கூட்டத்தில் இரண்டாவுது நாளிலாகிலும், இந்த சந்தர்ப்பத்தை பயன்படித்தி சிலுவையை நோக்கி பார்த்தால், உனக்கு நலமாயிருக்கும்."
The time which you get in the Stenkaasi convention, if you utilize this time, if you look at the cross, then it will be good for you.
"நீ மனந்திரும்பினால், உனக்கு இன்றக்கு இருக்கிற வியாதி உன்னை விட்டு போய்விடா."
If you repent, the sickness which you had today will remove, leave from you.
ஏசாயா பத்துந்தொது இருவத்திரண்டு சொல்லுகிறது.
Isaiah nineteen twenty-two says.
"நீ திரும்பினால் குனமாவாய்."
If you turn, then you will be healed.
யோபு இருவத்தி இரண்டு, இருவத்தி மூன்று சொல்லுகிறது.
Job.
இருவத்திரண்டு, இருவத்தி மூன்று சொல்லுகிறது.
Job twenty-two twenty-three says.
"நீ மனந்திரும்பினால், உன்து குடும்மம் திரும்ப, கட்டி எள்பப்படும்."
If you repent, then your family will be built up again.
"உன்னுடைய வாழ்க்கை, உன்னுடைய வருங்கால, உன்னுடைய ஊழியம் எல்லாமே சீராக இருக்க வேண்டுமானால், உன் மனந்திரும்பின வாழ்க்கையும் சீராக இருக்க வேண்டியது அவசியம்."
If your life, if your family life, if your ministry, if it should be right, then here, the life of repentance must also be right.
மனந்திரும்புதல்தான் மிகவும் முக்கியமானது பிரியமானவே.
Repentance is very much important, Yali Belabat.
ஆன்மீக வாழ்க்கை என்பது, ஒரு குறிக்பட்ட அனுபவத்தோடு, கிருஷ்ணவு ஏற்றுக்கொண்டால் மட்டும் போதாது.
Spiritual life is not with the certain experiences except in Christ, it's not enough.
அது வளர்ச்சி உள்ளது.
It has growth.
அதற்கு ஒரு நிறைவு உண்டு, பூர்ணம் உண்டு.
It has a fullness, it has a perfection.
அது இல்லாமல், ஒரு மனிஷனுடைய ஆன்மீகம் பூர்ணமடையாமல், அவன் நித்தியத்திலே மகிமை ஏற்பெற்றுக்கொள்ள இயலாது.
Without this, a man cannot be perfected and cannot receive glory in the eternal lives.
அந்த சீலவாம் கோபர, சீலவாமிலே உள்ள ஒரு கோபரம் உள்ளிந்தது.
A tower at Siloam fell.
அதறை மறுபடியும் தூக்கியேடுத்த தேவனால் முடியும்.
The Lord is able to lift it up again.
"நீ மனந்திரும்பினால், உன் வாள்வை சரியாக வாய்ப்புகள் இருக்கிறது."
If you have chances that you may repent.
அடுத்ததாக.
Nextly.
ஏசாயா திர்கதரிசன புஸ்தகம்.
Isaiah on the prophetical book.
ஏட்டாம் அதிகாரம்.
Chapter eight.
ஆறு, ஏழு, ஏட்டு வசனங்கள் வாசிப்போ.
Six, seven and eight.
இந்த ஜனம் மெதுவாய் ஒடிகிற சீலவாவின் தண்ணீர்களை அசத்தைப் பண்ணி, ரேசினையும், ரேமாலியாவின் குமாரனையும் சாந்து சந்தோஷிக்கிறபடியினால், இதோ ஆண்டவர் சர்வவல்லமேல் திரலான ஆற்றுநீரைப் போன்ற அசிரியாவின் ராஜாவையும், அவர்கள் சகல ஆடம்பரத்தையும் அவர்கள் மேல் பொறிலப்பண்ணுவார். அது அவர்கள் வோடெக் எல்லாவற்றின் மேலும் போய், அவர்கள் எல்லா கரேகளின் மேலும் பொறண்டு, யூதாவுக்கள் புகுந்து பிரபாகித்து கடந்து, களத்து மட்டும் வருங்க என்றார். இம்மானுவேலே அவன் செட்டைகளின் விரிவு உமது தேசத்தின் விசாலத்தை மூடு.
கத்தொடிய பரிசுத்த நாமத்துக்கு மய்மூண்டாவது.
Which is the holy name of God.
இங்கே இரண்டாவுது, அடுத்த சீலவாவின், அடுத்த அனுபவம் அங்கே சொல்லப்பட்டிருக்கிறது.
Next experience of Siloam was said here.
ஒன்று மனந்திரும்புதல்.
One is repentance.
இரண்டாவுது சீலவாவின் தண்ணீர்கள் என்று பன்மையிலே சொல்லப்பட்டிருக்கிறது.
Secondly, it is said in plural that waters of Siloam.
சீலவா என்று சொன்னால், அது ஒரு நீரோடை, நீர் ஊற்று என்று அர்த்தம்.
When we say Siloam, it is a fountain or a spring.
அது ஒரு நீரோடைதான், அது ஒரு ஊற்றிலிருந்து பொறப்பட்டு வருகிற நீரோடை.
It is a spring which comes out.
நான் எல்லாருக்கு மற்ற அனுபவங்களை, நான் ஒரு நாட்களிலே உங்களோடு பயிற்றுதுவள்ள விரும்புகிறேன்.
In the days to come, I would like to share all the other experiences.
வேதத்திலே நான் பார்க்கும்படுது.
When we read in the scripture.
பலவிதமான தண்ணீர்களைக் குறித்த சத்தியங்கள் சொல்லப்பட்டிருக்கிறது.
There's truth about many waters are said.
இந்த உலகத்திலே பலவிதமான தண்ணீர்களை நீங்களும் பார்க்க இயல.
You can also see different types of waters in this world.
ஒவ்வொரு தண்ணீர் இருக்கும், ஒவ்வொரு குனம் இருக்கிறது.
Every waters have different characters or tastes.
ஒவ்வொரு தண்ணீர் இருக்கும், ஒவ்வொரு டெஸ்ட் இருக்கிறது.
Every water has different tastes.
அது போலே.
Like wines.
வேதத்திலே சொல்லப்பட்ட தண்ணீர்கள் அடங்கிய சத்தியத்துக்குள்ளும், சத்தியங்களிலே பல வித்யாசங்கள் இருக்கிறது.
Truth which is contained with this water has different truths.
வேதத்திலே நீங்கள் பார்த்தால்.
When we see the scripture.
சீலவாவின் தண்ணீர்களை இப்பொழுது வாசித்தோ.
Now, we read waters of Siloam.
இன்னொரு பகுதிலே, ஈஸ்திரேவெலின் தண்ணீர்களென்று சொல்லப்பட்டிருக்கிறது.
In other words, it is said the waters of Israel.
இன்னொரு பகுதிலே, யோர்தானின் தண்ணீர்களென்று சொல்லப்பட்டிருக்கிறது.
In other ways, it is said waters of Jordan.
இன்னொரு இடத்திலே, பெத்திலேமின் தண்ணீரென்று சொல்லப்பட்டிருக்கிறது.
In other places, it is said waters of Bethlehem.
இப்படி நீங்கள் ஒரு பத்துப் பத்துநெந்து விதமான தண்ணீர்களை நீங்கள் பார்க்க முடியும்.
Likewise, you can see ten or fifteen types of waters.
இப்போ உங்க கைல கூட பலவிதமான பாட்டில் இருக்கும், ஒவ்வொரு பாட்டிலும், ஒவ்வொரு கம்பெனி பாட்டில் இருக்கும்.
You may also have different types of bottles in your hand, it is of different companies.
ஒவ்வொன்னுக்கு ஒவ்வொரு டெஸ்ட் இருக்கு.
Everything has different tastes.
உண்ணில் கெமிக்கல் கூட இருக்கும்.
One thing is more chemical.
செல்லரு வெவர்ந்திரியாமலே, எக்ஸ்பெரியான டேட் அதுல தண்ணீர் கூட குடிச்சித்து பட்டுக்கிறபா.
Without knowledge, some will use the water which the date has been expired.
அது போல பலையர்ப்பட்டு பிரமாணத்திலே ஜீவித்துக்கொண்டிருக்கிற சபைகளும் இருக்கிறது. அதுல எக்ஸ்பெரி டேட், முடிஞ்சு போன கதைகள்.
Likewise, people those who are living in the law is also living, they are expired period.
உதியர்ப்பட்டு வந்த பின்பு கூட.
After coming to New Testament period.
பலவிதமான தண்ணீர்கள், இந்த சத்தியங்களிலே வித்யாசங்கள் நீங்கள் உணர வேண்டியது அவசியம்.
Many tastes, you have to realize different truths and truths.
இந்த சீலவாம், இந்த தண்ணீர்கள்.
The waters of Siloam.
இருசிலேமின் உயர்ந்த பகுதிலிருந்து, தாள்ந்த பகுதியை நோக்கி வருகிறது.
It was coming down from the top of Jerusalem to the lowest place.
திரபாயோன் என்கிற ஒரு பள்ளத்தாக்கிலிருந்து அது பொறப்படுகிறது.
It is started from the wilderness called Girafaim.
அது கடைசியாக ராஜாவின் கொலத்தில வந்து சேருகிறது.
At last, it come and reached the pool of kings.
அது வர்ற வழிலே சியோனோ டாச் பண்ணது.
நதியின் தன்மையும், இஸ்ரவேலின் தண்ணீருடைய தன்மையும், அவனுக்குப் புரிந்துவிடல குடிய பார்வை இல்ல.
He didn't have the sight that he may understand the rivers of Damascus and the waters of Israel.
அவன் தண்ணீர்னா எல்லாமே ஒரே தண்ணீர் நடிச்சிட்டா.
If it is water, he thought everything is equal.
கடல்லையும் தண்ணீர் இருக்கு.
There is water in the sea.
அதை அவனாக குடிக்கும் முடிமா?
Can anyone drink it?
சாக்கடையின் தண்ணீர் தான் போது, அதையாறாது யூஸ் பண்ணும் முடிமா?
Even the water is going in the gutter, can anyone use it?
நம்ம ஊர்ல தாமரவர்ணிபோது, தம்மெல்லாமே யூஸ் பண்றோம்.
Tamara Bunny River is going here, we all are using it.
அது போலே?
Likewise.
சத்தியங்கள் பல விதங்களில போதிக்கப்படுகிறது, எல்லா சத்தியங்களும் உங்களை எங்கியாது கொண்டு வைச்சிருக்கோம்.
Truths are preaching in different manner that may take you in some other place.
முதலாவது இந்த தண்ணீர்கள் சிலோவாவின் தண்ணீரிலே குறித்த பார்வை, அறிவு, ஞானம், விளக்கம் முக்கியம்.
First thing is you should have a knowledge, you should have a sight, understanding, revelation is much essential about this waters.
இந்த தண்ணீரிலே குறித்த ஒரு தெளிவான சத்திய உனக்குத் தெரியாத பச்சத்தில, நீங்கள் பேசிக்கொண்டு, பொலம்பிக்கொண்டு கிளிப்படியாமல் போய்க்கொண்டே இருப்பீர்கள்.
Unless you have a clear understanding about this water, you will lament, you will not obey and you will go off.
நாகமானுக்கு அந்த வேலகரா வந்து சொன்னா, இது ரெம்ப சிம்பிள் கான்செஸ்ட்.
That servant came and told to name and it's a very simple concept.
உடனே நேர ஏறங்கிபோயி தண்ணீரில் ஏறங்கனா, ஏழுதரம் முளிகே வெளியே வரும்போது, அருமியான சுகங்கிடைத்து.
Immediately he went down into the water when he was immersed seven times, he got a clear healing.
நான் கேரல்ல ஒரு மீட்டிங் போயிருந்தே போது.
When I went to Kerala for a meeting.
ஒரு உளியகர சகோரன் சாச்சி சொன்ன.
One servant of God testified.
அருமியான ஒரு சாச்சி நான் அடிகிடி பேசுவேன்.
It's a very good testimony, I used to speak about this very often.
அவங்க அம்மாவுக்கு சரிரமெல்லாம் ஒரு மாரி ஒரு அலிபு.
Is her mother had a itching sensation in her body?
ரெம்ப நாச்சம் அடக்க.
There was a bad smell.
அனால பிள்ளைகளே தாய பாக்க வேதனப்படுவாங்க.
So the children used to grieve to see her mother.
அவங்க சாப்பாடு பங்கு வைப்பாங்க.
She will cook.
அவங்க போட்டு குடுத்தாங்கன்னா உங்களுக்குச் சாப்பறப்படிக்காத, அவங்க கையும் காலையும் பாத்தவன்னு அப்படி பிளேட்டோட்டு எந்திச்சு பெடுவாங்க.
If they serve, they couldn't eat it, if they see their hands and legs, they'll just go off.
அப்பளும் அரூருக்கு குடிய ஒரு சூனலை.
It was a situation that they will not bow me in.
கடைசில அவங்களுக்கு இந்த சத்தியம் தெரிந்தது.
At last they came to know about this truth.
அவரு சொன்றார், "எங்க அம்மா ஞானசான எடுக்கதுக்கு குல் அந்த தொட்டிக்கிட்ட ஏறங்கும்போது, அவங்களுக்கு இந்த வியாதிய இருந்தத பாத்த.
He said, "I saw when my mother go near the water baptism tank to take water baptism."
ஞானசான எடுத்த அந்த டேங்க்க விட்டு வெளியே வரும்போது, எங்க அம்மாவுக்கு இந்த வியாதிய இல்ல.
When she come out of the water baptism tank, the sickness was not enough.
இது ஒரு வெளியேறங்கமான ஒரு தோச்சம், ஒரு மாச்சம்.
It's an outward appearance, it was a change.
ஆனால் ஞானசானம் என்கிறதுல, இன்னும் இருக்கு, அது தான் உள்ளான நல்மன சாச்சில, ஒரு பெரிய ஒரு தெய்விகத் தன்மை கிடைக்குற.
In the water baptism, there is an inward thing that is a very good conscience we have.
முதலாவது இந்த தண்ணீரிலே குறித்த ஒரு பார்வை அவசியம்.
We should have a sight about these waters.
முதலாவது கிருஸ்துவைப்பற்றிய ஒரு பார்வை தேவ.
First thing is we should have a sight about Christ.
அது ரெம்ப முக்கியமானது.
That's very much important.
ரச்சிப்பே குறித்த ஒரு பார்வை ரெம்ப முக்கியமானது.
It's very much important that we should have a sight of salvation.
அடுத்ததாக இந்த ஞானசானத்தைக் குறித்த ஒரு பார்வை மிகவும் முக்கியமானது.
The second thing is we should have a sight of this water baptism.
எப்பள்ளது பவுல் ஓளியின் மொலமாக ஆண்டவரை சந்தித்தானோ, அந்த நிமிஷத்திலிருந்து அவனுக்கு ஒரு குருட்டாட்டம் போன்ற ஒரு தோச்சம்.
When Paul met God by the light, he had darkness in his eyes.
இப்பள்ளது அனுநிய அவைத் தேவன் அனுப்புகிறான்.
Now Lord sent an anemia.
அவன் வந்து இவன் மே தலையின் மேல கை வைத்த உடனே.
As soon as he laid his head upon him.
அவன் கண்ணிலிருந்து ஒரு மீன் செதில் போன்றது கீழே விளிந்தது.
Waves came out of him.
அவன் பார்வை அடைந்தா.
He got a clear vision.
அந்த பார்வை அடைந்த பெறகுதா, ஞானசான எடுத்தாரு, அபிஷேகம் பெற்றார்.
As soon as he got the sight, he took water baptism.
முதலாவது இந்த ஞானசான சத்தியத்தைக் குறித்த ஒரு சரியான பார்வை விளக்கம் தேவ.
We should have a clear revelation or sight about this water baptism.
அப்படி இல்லாமல் நீங்கள் ஆண்டவரைப் பின்பற்றி பயனில்லை.
Without this vision, if you follow God, it is of no use.
மத்தையும் இருவது மூப்பதி நான் கைப் பார்க்கும்போது.
When we see Matthew twenty and thirty four.
ஒரு குருடன் ஏசுவின் அட்டில் வருகிறான்.
One blind man came to Jesus.
அவனை ஏசு சூமாக்குகிறான்.
Jesus healed him.
அவன் குருடனா ஏசுவைப் பின்பற்றவில்லை, பார்வை அடைந்து ஏசுவுக்குப் பின்சென்றான்.
He didn't follow Jesus as a blind man, he got the high sight and he followed him.
உனுடை மனக்கணுடைய குருடு நீக்கப்படவேண்டும்.
Blindness must be removed from you.
சத்தியத்தைப் பத்திய குட்டுத் தன்மை உங்களுக்கு நீக்கப்படவேண்டும்.
Blindness of the truth must be removed from you.
யாரு என்ன சொன்னாலும், அது அந்த உண்மைத் தன்மையை நீங்கள் புரிந்து கொள்ளங்க.
Whatever people said, you have to understand the real truth.
ஏசு கிருஸ் ஒருவனை குணமாக்குகிறான்.
Jesus Christ healed one person.
ஒரு குருடன் வருகிறான்.
A blind person came.
நீ இப்பள்ளது எதை காங்கராயிங்கடா?
What are you seeing now?
அவன் சொன்னா, "நான் மனிஷனல்லாம் மரமா பாக்கறேன்."
He said, "I'm seeing man as a tree."
மனிஷன மரமா போதாம் எப்படி இருப்பான் யோசித்து பாருங்க.
If we see man as a tree, how he will be?
மனிஷன் மரமா பாக்கற ஒரு தன்மை இருக்கறது.
He had the attitude of seeing man as a tree.
ஏசு அடுத்தா அவனை குணமாக்கிட்டு, "இப்ப எப்படி பாக்கறேன்? நான் தெளிவாய் பார்க்கறேன்" சொன்ன.
After Jesus healed him, he said, "How are you seeing now?" He said, "I'm seeing clearly."
எங்கிருக்கிறவங்கள்ளா நீங்க மனிஷனை எப்படி பாக்கறீங்க?
All those who are here, how are you seeing man?
புருஷனை எப்படி பாக்கறீங்க?
How are you seeing your husband?
மனவியை எப்படி பாக்கறீங்க?
How are you seeing your wives?
உங்களே பிள்ளைகளை எப்படி பாக்கறீங்க?
How are you seeing your children?
உளியர்களை எப்படி பாக்கறீங்க?
How are you seeing the servants of God?
சபையை எப்படி பாக்கறீங்க?
How are you seeing the church?
சத்தியத்தை எப்படி பாக்கறீங்க?
How are you seeing the truth?
உங்களே பார்வை மிகவும் முக்கியம்.
Your sight is very much important.
ஆனால் அப்படினால் தான் பவுலை சந்தித்ததான தேவம் முதலாவது அவனுக்குப் பார்வையை தெளிவான பார்வை குடுத்து, அதற்குப் பின்பு ஞானசானமை எடுக்கவைத்தா.
The Lord who met Paul gave a clear sight to him after that he made him to take water baptism.
இந்த ஞானசானத்தைக் குறித்த ஒரு தெளிவான சத்திய வேண்டும், அதற்குப் பின்பு நீங்கள் ஞானசானமை எடுங்க.
Here you should have a clear understanding about water baptism after that you have to take water baptism.
இப்படி பிரசங்கமான ஆரம்சோன்னு, இப்ப சில பாஸ்டர்ஸலாம் பிராய் ஞானசானத்துக்குத் திரிப்பு வந்திட்டாங்க.
If we preach in this manner, many have come to water baptism, any pastors have come back to the water baptism.
பெரிபெரிய சபை நடத்தறாங்க, ஒர்சிப் நடத்தறாங்க, பிரைஸ் எண்ட் ஒர்சிப்லா நடத்திற பாட்சிகள்ளா, இப்ப வந்து ஞானசான எடுக்கோம், நான் சொன்னா ஞானசான எடுக்கம்லா உளியிங்க. அது எடுத்தோ, தனி இப்ப கேட்ட வித்யாசமா தெரியுது, திருமூ எடுத்துலா எப்படியா பரலவது போனு, திரிப்பு எடுத்ததுல உன்னு தப்புல எல்லா எங்களுக்குடுத்துருங்கங்கற.
They are connecting with churches, they are connecting big prayers and worship, they are coming and asking us to administer water baptism. If we said, "Are you connecting all these things without taking water baptism?", they said, "We took the water baptism, but when we hear all these things, it is different. So it is not wrong that we take water baptism, so give us water baptism."
சரியான பார்வையைப் பெற்று நீங்கள் ஞானசானமை.
Receiving a clear sight, we have to take water baptism.
சரியான பார்வைப் பெற்று ஏசுவுக்குப் பின்னாலே வர.
Receiving clear sight, you have to follow Jesus.
சரியான ஞானசானம் எடுத்தால்தா, உங்க வாழ்க்கையில் அடுத்த ஸ்டெப்புக்கு நீ பயனப்பட முடியும்.
When you take right water baptism, after that you can travel to next step.
ஞானசானம் எடுக்கவேண்டியது ஒரு கடலை.
It is health responsible that you have to take water baptism.
மத்தையும் இருவத்தையும் பத்துந்துபதுல பார்க்கும்போது.
When we read in Matthew twenty eight ninety.
ஏசு கிருஸ்து பரத்துக்கு ஏறி போகும்போது.
When Jesus Christ ascended to heaven.
நீங்கள் போய் சகல ஜாதிகளை இம்சிஷ்வராக்குங்க.
He said, "Go he and make all the disciples."
பிதா குமாரன் பரிசுத்தாவின் நாமத்திலே அவர்களுக்கு ஞானசானம் கொடுங்க.
In the name of Father and of the Son and of the Holy Ghost, baptize them.
பின்பு நான் கட்டிட்ட யாவையும் அவர்களுக்கு கைகொள்ளும்படி அவர்களுக்கு உபதேசம் பண்டுங்க.
Teaching them to observe all things whatsoever, I have commanded you.
ஒரு மனிதன் பிதா குமாரன் பரிசுத்தாவின் நாமத்திலே ஞானசானம் பெற்ற பின்புதான், அவனுக்காலமான உபதேசங்கள் தேவைப்படுகிறது.
After a man takes water baptism in the name of the Father, Son and the Holy Ghost, he needs a deeper truth.
சரியான ஞானசானம் எடுத்தால், நீ வருங்கோபத்துக்குத் தப்பிக்கொளுகிறாய்.
If you take right water baptism, then you will be escaped from the wrath to come.
சரியான ஞானசானம் பெற்றால், உனக்கு வானம் திரக்கு.
If you take right water baptism, then the heaven will be open for you.
சரியான ஞானசானம் எடுத்தால், நீ ஆக்கனைக்குத் தப்பிவிடுவாய்.
If you take right water baptism, then you will be escaped from condemnation.
மத்தையும் மூன்று ஏகுலை சொல்லிருக்கிறது, "வருங்கோபத்துக்குத் தப்பித்துக்கொள்ள, உங்களுக்கு வகைக்காட்டினவன் யா?"
Matthew three seventeen it says, "Who has showed you the way that you may be escaped from the wrath to come?"
ஏசு ஞானசானம் பெற்று கரையேற்று போலும் வானம் திரந்தது.
When Jesus took water baptism, the heaven was open for him.
பிரியமானவே, சரியான ஞானசானத்தைக் குறித்த ஒரு அறிவு பெற்று, நீங்கள் அந்த சத்தியத்திக்குக் கிளிப்படிந்து பாருங்க, உங்களே வாழ்வை மிகவும் செளிப்பாக, தெய்விகமாக, மகிமியாக அமயம்.
Taking a right knowledge of water baptism, understand it clearly, then take water baptism, then your life will be very glorious.
மார்க் பதினாறு பதினாறு சொல்லுகிறது, "விசுவாசம் உள்ளவனாகி, ஞானசானம் பெற்றவன் ரசிக்கப்படுவா?"
Mark sixteen sixteen it says that, "Those who have received the water baptism being believed, then he shall be saved."
அப்போஸ்லர் இரண்டு மூப்பத்தையேட்டு சொல்லுகிறது, "மனம் திரும்பி ஞானசானம் பெற்றுக்கொள்ளுங்கள்."
Acts two thirty eight says, "You have to repent and take water baptism."
இன்னைக் கானேகர் ஞானசான எடுத்திருக்காங்க, ஆனால் மனம் திரும்பாமலே எடுத்திருக்காங்க.
Today many have taken water baptism, but they have taken without repentance.
அது ஒரு பெரிய தவறு.
It's a great mistake.
குழிச்சிட்டு வெளியே வந்தப்போறு, ஒரு சோப் போட்டுட்டு ரோட்டில போன மாறிருக்கோம்.
After taking bath, if any person puts soap or walking on the road likewise, it will be there.
காதுல சோப் போட வெளியே வருவாங்க, ஒரு சிலர்.
Some used to come with soap on their ears.
தலைல சோப் போட வெளியே வருவாங்க.
Some used to come out with soap in their heads.
அதே மாதிரி.
Likewise.
ஒரு சிலர். தங்களே வாழ்க்கையில் சரியான ஞானசானத்தை எடுக்கவில்லை.
Some haven't taken right baptism in their lives.
காரணம் ஒரு சரியாய் மனந்திரும்புல்லை.
Reason is they haven't repented properly.
அப்போஸ்லர் நடபடிக்காய்.
Acts.
எட்டாமதிகாரம்.
Chapter eight.
பதிமூனாவசனத்தில் சீமூன் என்கிற, ஒரு மாயவித்த காரன், ஞானசானம் எடுக்கிற காரியத்தை நாம் பார்க்கலாம்.
In verse thirteen, we can see a Simon who takes water baptism.
அவனு ஒரு பெரிய மந்திரவாதியாகிறும்.
He's a great magician.
அவருக்குப் பின்பு பிலிப் அவனுக்கு உண்பாக செய்த, ஏசுவின் நாமத்தில் செய்த அடையாளங்களைப் பாத்து பிரமிதான்.
After that, he was astonished seeing all the miracles and signs which was done by Philip.
அவனு ஒன்று புரிந்தது, ஏசுதான் தேவங்கிறது மட்டும் அவனுக்குப் புரிந்து விட்ட.
He understood one thing that Jesus is God.
அப்போஸ்லர் எட்டு பதிமூன்று சொல்லுகிறது.
Acts eight thirteen says.
சீமூனும் விசுவாசித்து ஞானசானம் பெற்றுக்கொண்டா.
Simon also believed and took water baptism.
அவனுடே வாழ்க்கையில் ஒரு விசுவாசம் மட்டுமே இருந்தது.
He had only belief and faith.
சரி, ஏசு ஒரு கடவோள்.
Jesus is God.
அவர் ஒரு அவதார புருஷன்.
He is the one who has.
இவளே தான் அவனுக்குத் தெரிந்தது.
He had only this knowledge.
ஆனால் வாழ்க்கை மாற்றுங்கிறது அவனுக்குத் தெரியலை.
He didn't know that his life has to be changed.
அற்புதங்களைச் செய்த அந்த பாஸ்டர் பிலிப், அவருங்கொடு மனந்திரும்புலே எதிர்பார்க்காமலே, அவனுக்கு ஞானசானத்தை வருக்குடுத்துவிட்ட.
That pastor Philip who did miracle without having repentance, he also taken water baptism.
சபையில் ஒருத்தான் வந்திட்டான் உண்ணே ஞானசானம் கொடுக்கிற பாஸ்டர்களை நம்ம பார்க்கும் முடியும்.
If any person comes, we can see the pastors who administered water baptism.
ஒரு ஆர்மாசம் மனந்திரும்புல் கேட்ட கணி கொடுக்கறானான் அவனை செக் பண்ணம்.
We have to check, is he giving fruit and repentance?
இல்லாம குடுத்தவங்கள்ளா எப்படி இருக்காங்கன்னு உங்களுக்குத் தெரியும்.
You all know those without these things, if you have given, how they are.
அப்போஸ்லர் எட்டு இருவத்தையும் இரண்டுல இவனைப் பார்த்து பேதிருபேசுகிறார்.
Acts eight twenty two, looking at him, Peter started speaking.
உன் துர்க்குணத்தை விட்டு நீ மனந்திரும்பே.
Repent therefore of thy wickedness.
பதிமூன்றுல அவர் ஏற்கனவே ஞானசான எடுத்துக்காரு.
In verse thirteen, he has taken water baptism already.
ஆனால் இருவத்தையும் இரண்டுல இப்ப அவத்திர பேசும்போது, நீ மனந்திரும்பனு பேதிருபேசுகிறார்.
In verse twenty two, Peter speaks with him saying that you have to repent.
பேதிரும் ஏசுவின் நாமத்தில் உளியம் செகிற வர்த, ஏசுவின் நாமத்திலே ரசிக்கப்பட்டவர்தான் அருமியான உளியம் செகிற வர்த.
He was also the one who was saved in name of Jesus and he is doing ministry well.
பிலிப்பும் அரேய மாதிரிதான் உளியம் செகிறார்.
Philip was also doing the ministry the same time.
ரெண்டுவர்களே ஒரே பைபில் தான் இருக்கு.
They two have the same Bible.
பிலிப்பும் ஏசுவைத்தான் பேசுகிறார்.
Philip also spoke.
பேதிரும் ஏசுவைத்தான் பேசுகிறார்.
Peter also speaking about Jesus.
ரெண்டுவரு ஏசுவைத்தான் பேசுறாங்க.
They two are speaking about Jesus.
ஆனால் ஒருத்தர் வந்து விசுவாச்சவனை ஞானசானம் கொடுத்துட்டாரு.
But one person, as soon as he believed, he took baptism.
ஆனால் இப்ப பேதிரு வந்து அப்போஸ்லர், அவரு வந்து பேசும்போது சொன்றாரு, "எப்பா நீ மனந்திரும்பே இல்லையே, துர்க்குணத்தை விட்டு முதலாவது மனம் திரும்பே?"
Peter is the apostle, when he started speaking, he said, "You didn't repent, you have to repent from your wickedness."
இப்ப பாஸ்டர்களில் உள்ள வித்யாசம் தெரிஞ்சிருச்சா?
Have you known about the differences of the pastors?
சத்தியத்தில் உள்ள வித்யாசம் தெரிஞ்சிருச்சா?
Have you seen the difference in the truths?
ஞானசானத்தில் உள்ள வித்யாசம் புரியுதா?
Can you understand the difference in the baptism?
பிலிப்பு வந்து மிரக்கல் செய்வாரு.
Philip is the one who did miracles.
அற்புதங்கள் செய்வாரு.
He will do wonders.
அவரைப் பாத்து இந்த மந்திரவாதி மிரண்டுட்டா.
Looking at him, this magician was trembled.
அவனால் அவனாது கிரகித்துக்கொளவே முடியலை.
He couldn't accept it.
ஏசுவின் நாமத்துக்கு இவ்வளவு பெரிய சத்தியான் சொல்லி.
He is the name of Jesus, that's this much of power.
அவனு ஒட்டைங்க ஞானசான எடுத்துரேன்.
So he said, "Immediately I'll take baptism."
அவனை எடுத்தது தவறன்சொல்லலை, ஆனால் மனம் திரும்பாமல் எடுத்ததுதான் தவறு.
It is not wrong that he has taken baptism, but he has taken water baptism without repentance, that is wrong.
இருவத்தையும் மூனாவசனத்தில் கசப்பான பிச்சிலும், பாவக் கட்டிலும் நீ அகப்பட்டிருக்கிறதாய், நான் காங்கரேன் என்று அப்போஸ்லர் நம்மைப் பார்த்து பேசினா.
In verse twenty three, the apostle looking at him and said, "I perceive that thou art in the gall of bitterness and in the bone of iniquity."
ஒரு மனிதனுடைய உள்ளான மனிதிலே ஒரு மாச்சம் ஏற்படாமல், சரியான பார்வை கிடைக்காமல், அவனுக்கு ஞானசானம் கொடுக்கக் கூடாது.
Without change in his inward life, without having a proper sight, we should not administer him with water baptism.
ஒரு சில தெளிப்பு ஞானசானம் எடுத்ததாக சொல்லுகிறார்கள், வேத, எந்த பைபில்யும் அதை ஆதாரமே கிடையாது.
Some are saying that they have taken sprinkling baptism, but reference is not given in any Bible.
குழந்தைகளுக்கு ஞானசானம் கொடுக்கறாங்க, அதுக்கு எங்கேயும் ஆதாரம் கிடையாது.
They'll administer child baptism, the reference is not given in the Bible.
இப்படி இல்லாமலான் குடுத்து ஜனங்களையா மதக்குடாது.
Giving the thing which is not, we should not deceive others.
கத்துடைய பரிசுத்த நாமத்துக்கு மகிமை வாங்கு.
Lord, which is the holy name of God.
ஏசு கிருஸு சொன்னது, "பிதா குமாரன் பரிசுத்தாவின் நாமத்திலே ஞானசானம் கொடுங்க."
Jesus Christ said, "Give the water baptism in the name of Father, Son and the Holy Ghost."
ஏசு கிருஸ் கரைபொறண்டு ஓடுகிற, யோர்தானிலே ஞானசானம் எடுத்தா.
Jesus Christ took baptism in the Jordan where it overflowed.
மத்தையும் மூனாமதிகாரம் பதிமூனாவசனத்திலே அவர் யோர்தானில் ஏறங்கினார்.
should not sprout again
This is the first verse of the 10th verse of the Quran In verse 2 People of Israel, they came out of Egypt and they crossed the Red Sea They were born for 400 years bondage they was in hand They were delivered from the clutches of Egypt They were delivered from the clutches of Pharaoh By grace they are crossing the Red Sea What does the word of God says about this? The people of Israel, they came out of Egypt and they crossed the Red Sea People of Israel, crossing the Red Sea, it is compared to water baptism There is no relationship between them and Egypt The power of Egypt, those who came behind them They are coming into the sea But what did the Lord do? The Lord destroyed the power of Egypt You will never see the Egypt here after, but you are seeing it today When you come into the water, in the water baptism, all occurs, all this sin, it will have a complete end to it Have you taken baptism in this manner? I am preaching today, but when I take water baptism, I do not know even the quarter I was sitting as a very small lad He asked me, have you smoked any cigarette? I said, no, I haven't Have you done any other mistake? I don't remember anything I don't know They asked me to confess very small things, I confessed them, they gave me baptism When I come here, it's a very big depth Every message, it's going very different A right experience of water baptism is Egypt which is in your life must come to an end Baptism, which doesn't have a complete end to the power of Egypt, though you have taken water baptism, it is not a right baptism, for no use If your life is not changed, if your sight is not changed, then that baptism is not essential Every day, a change has to take place in your life, that is an experience When we read in first Peter, chapter, verse, chapter 4 When we read in 20 and 21 3, 20 and 21 What is said here? That Noah entered into the ark, it is compared to water baptism Noah, 8 women, 3 sons and daughters-in-law, the age came into the ark A child of God, there is an experience that he has to enter into the ark, that is very important in water baptism First thing is coming out of Egypt It's put an end to Egypt The relationship of Egypt must be cut off Hereafter, you will not see Egyptians The relationship between you and the sin will be cut off When a child comes out of mother's womb, the umbilical cord must be cut off If it says that it's my child, my child, these two has to die When you take water baptism, you should have cut off from your relationship between Egypt and your life, otherwise it will keep continuing and your life will be going in a Nextly It is not enough, you have taken baptism The Lord shows that it's the experience of that Noah entered into the ark They entered into the ark, it is that which is compared to it Someone has given it where, what, we do not know anything, without all these things, we should not lose our lives We have seen Acts 19, apostle who has been anointed as administered water baptism One is being immersed In the name of Father, Son and Holy Ghost The one who has taken water baptism must administer After taking baptism, relationship with Egyptians must be cut off After taking baptism, we should not walk recklessly, we have to come into the ark From the world to the ark, from ark to the heaven You have to understand it clearly Noah was in the world But he made ark He entered into it A great destruction came But his ark was preserved and it went and stood at Ararat This ark took into the spot of Ararat Ararat is the land of the earth Ararat means it's a holy land
Give room for the power of blood.
You will be the one who will kill the devil.
If as much as possible, just keep praising God.
You will be the one who will kill the evil.
As much as possible, get filled in the spirit.
You will be the one who will speak with God in an unknown tongue. You will be the one who will raise your hands. You will be the one who will walk away.
As much as possible, stand in ease.
You will be the one who will make the Lord happy.
As much as possible, glorify God.
You are a fool, you will not fight for me.
Be silent, it's a time that the Lord will fight for you.
You will be the one who will kill the evil. You will be the one who will kill the evil.
If it is true that the power of Egyptians has been destroyed, then the power which is fighting with you will be destroyed today.
You will be the one who will kill the evil. You will be the one who will kill the evil.
If it is the will of God to destroy the power which was fighting for four hundred years, then it is the will of God to destroy all the powers which is fighting with you today.
Lord, I surrender myself to the truth. Lord, I surrender myself to the truth.
Lord, I heal myself to that God.
Lord, I surrender myself to the truth.
Lord, I surrender myself to the truth of waters.
I need the experience of this repentance. I believe. I believe.
With a sword, one person is coming amidst.
You will be the one who will change your life.
Hereafter, all your battles will be changed as victory.
Allah, the Lord is coming. Oh, Allah, the Lord is coming. Allah, the Lord is coming. Allah, the Lord is coming. I am going to face the nations with you. I am going to do great things by you. I am going to face the nations with you.
That all the enemies will put to shame.
Your head may be lifted up. My hands will be upon you. Lord, I am not a Christian. I am not a Christian.
Lord, I don't desire to live as a Christian, but I desire to live in Christ.
I need the experience of repentance. That should be my life, just lift up your hands. I know. The power of Pharaoh is going to be destroyed today. Can you understand it? The power of Pharaoh is going to be destroyed today.
The Lord is surrendering the power which has made you as born.
You are afraid.
For what thing you have trembled and feared?
You are afraid.
For what thing you fear and fled away?
That power is going to be destroyed by your own sign. Hallelujah, the Lord is going to take victory. You will be the one who will kill the evil.
Just keep praising, a great power is coming down.
Hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen. Amen. You are among us. One minute. You are among us. You should not be astonished seeing the great mountain which is before you. You are among us. You should not be astonished seeing the great mountain which is before you. You are among us.
Oh, great mountain, who art thou?
Before Zerbael, thou shall become a plain. You are among us.
Oh, great idol, how art thou now?
This is a stone rolling down. You are among us.
All the idol power will be completely broken and become ashes.
Hallelujah, hallelujah. How many of you believe? You will be the one who will kill the evil.
The power which is fighting with you, the Lord is destroying it.
You will be the one who will kill the evil.
All those who can say in the smell, lift up your hands and praise God.
You will be the one who will kill the evil.
The Lord is going to give you an anointing.
You will be the one who will kill the evil. You will be the one who will kill the evil.
Where you slipped, where you trembled, in that place, the Lord is going to lift you up. He is going to do it.
You will be the one who will kill the evil. You will be the one who will kill the evil.
Paul who slipped once, he says, "I can do all things through Jesus Christ who strengthened me."
In our midst, a great God is coming.
The Lord is coming amidst.
I see many crowns on his hands. I see, he is laying crowns upon many heads. You will take victory. He is changing you as king. He is making you as overcome. He is giving you crowns. You will be the one who will kill the evil.
His fullness of power is coming down.
All the diseases will be removed. Amen, hallelujah, hallelujah. A girl was attacked. When she was attacked, you have heard about it. This girl is going to die. This girl is going to die. I am not going to hurt her. I am not going to hurt her. I am not going to hurt her. She left the girl. It is a small matter. There is a story. Yes, Jesus. The apostle was attacked. He ran away. He took her. Yes, he is in our midst. He took your life. He is willing to sacrifice your life. He will kill your life. He will kill your life. He will kill your life. He is a merciful man. He is a merciful man. He took your life. He took your life. He won your life. He saved your life. He is in our midst. How many will you win? How many will you win? Hallelujah. He was abducted, killed, taken alive. He was killed by children, killed by wolves. He was killed by many. He said, "He is dead." I will be a pariah. I will be a pariah. I will be a martyr. How many will you win? You will be the one who will kill the evil. Hallelujah. I will be a merciful man. I will win my life. I will win my world. I will win my faith. I will go to the enemy. You will be the one who will kill the evil. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. The devil is killing me. I will win. You will be the one who will kill me. Hallelujah. The devil killed me. I killed the children. I will be a martyr. Amen. You will be a martyr. The Lord will be a martyr. You will be a martyr. Amen. The Lord will be a martyr. The children, the saints, the saints. Amen. Oh, the children, the saints, the saints. You will be a martyr. The Lord will be a martyr. You will be a martyr. You will be a martyr. The Lord will be a martyr. The children, the saints, the saints. The children, the saints, the saints. You will be a martyr. The Lord will be a martyr. You will be a martyr. The Lord will be a martyr. Allah, the Lord is coming. Jesus, the Lord is coming. Jesus, the Lord is coming. Yes, we will be reborn. Yes, we will be reborn. Yes, we will be reborn. We will be reborn. We will be reborn. Yes, we will be reborn. Yes, we will be reborn. Yes, we will be reborn. We will be reborn. We will be reborn. Yes, we will be reborn. Hallelujah, the Lord is coming. Hallelujah, the Lord is coming. Yes, we will be reborn. We will be reborn. We will be reborn. Yes, we will be reborn. Hallelujah, the Lord is coming. Yes, we will be reborn. We will be reborn. We will be reborn. Yes, we will be reborn. Hallelujah, the Lord is coming. Hallelujah, the Lord is coming. Yes, we will be reborn. 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 Allah, the Lord is coming. Allah, the Lord is coming. Allah, the Lord is coming. Dear people, you have been praying for water baptism. You have been praying for water baptism. You have been praying for water baptism. You have been praying for water baptism.
Jesus Christ who is a fore runner, he took water baptism, he came out of the water and he went to heaven.
When we say he is a fore runner,
we are the ones who are following him.
We have to obey to the water baptism. What is that water? That is the word of God. Till we live in the word of God, we can overcome everything. The word of God was spoken to you before you hit the tomb. Many of you are taking water baptism here. How many of you obeyed water baptism? How many of you are obeying water baptism? This truth of water baptism is like a scene. You were hearing about it. Beloved, you will hear more about it. To the extent you hear about this, you have to surrender yourself to that extent. It is the truth which is in the death of his baptism. Jesus said, "I overcame the world." I overcame the world. As I am not of this world, you are not of this world. Dear people of God, all those who have come to this convention. People of this nation, people of God, those who have come to this tenkasi convention. We are not of this world. Ah, Jesus Christ overcame the world and he went to heaven. He is a goal in our lives. Again, we are going to sing the chorus. We have desired and we are dared to follow Jesus. The spirit of God will descend upon us. How Jesus Christ obeyed the word and took water baptism? When he surrendered his life to the enemy, the spirit of God descended upon him like a dove. The dove, the spirit of God is going to descend upon us. Say, "Lord, I placed crowns before me." Lord, I throw the world behind me. I will follow thee. With the determination, let us all sing the chorus. The spirit of God is going to descend upon us all. Let us all be vigilant to receive anointing. Yes, we will be reborn. Yes, we will be reborn. Yes, we will be reborn. 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 Hallelujah. The Lord is coming. 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 Hallelujah. Victory, victory, hallelujah, victory, victory. Victory, victory, hallelujah, victory, victory. Yes, the name of the Lord is victory. Yes, the name of the Lord is victory. Hallelujah, victory, victory. Victory, victory. Yes, the name of the Lord is victory. Yes, the name of the Lord is victory. Victory, victory. Victory, victory. Victory, victory. Victory, victory. Yes, the name of the Lord is victory. Yes, the name of the Lord is victory. Victory, victory, hallelujah. Victory, victory. Victory, victory. Victory, victory. Yes, the name of the Lord is victory. Yes, the name of the Lord is victory. Victory, victory. Victory, victory. Victory, victory. Victory, victory. Yes, the name of the Lord is victory. Yes, the name of the Lord is victory. Victory, victory. Victory, victory. Victory, victory. Victory, victory. Yes, the name of the Lord is 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 victory. The Lord is coming. We are praying for the Lord. We pray 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 for the Lord.